President Hill, little bird.
I don't think it has.
I got that early and I didn't think it would be.
Hey, Mr. Rutner. Apparently we're not good together at the end. So we'll try. You on the platform, that is, and we'll talk. Yeah, I forgot that. Is that what you want to say?
I'd like to call the May eighth meeting of Macon County Board of Commissioners to order, and I would like to welcome all of you in attendance. I have a little bit of a smaller crowd than what the last few months have been. But again, I'd like to welcome all of you. There's probably a little bit of angst and excitement up here as it's election day. So we'll try and keep focused and try and get us all out of here as quickly as possible. I know the media would probably rather be downstairs watching that results come in than being here. So we'll get you out of here. Okay. Any announcements, Mr. Manager? Anybody? I would like to just make one quick one. Last Friday, I don't know if all you gentlemen had the same quantity of phone calls that I've had from members that have been going to, that attend our senior services facility, but I decided it was time for me to go visit. So I made a phone call down and set up a little time and was able to speak and tour the facility from... They were having bingo day, so I was able to tour that and tour adult daycare. And I hate to admit it as chairman of this board, but I will. I was, I was in awe at how busy they were. I had to circle the parking lot twice, look for parking, that type of thing. And I was enamored with how many volunteers that give up their time literally on a daily basis to help that facility function along. It's good, and I would encourage my fellow commissioners, if any of y'all have a chance. I think it's eye-opening. It was for me. Just go take a thirty-minute tour of that facility during the work, work week and see what's happening. And I understand there are phone calls now and why they're saying they need a, they need some expansion. They need some larger facility. I'll definitely be a proponent of that now moving forward. Anything else? Full all rise. We'll have a moment of silence, and I'm gonna ask Commissioner Shields to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have no public hearings tonight, a public comment period. I have the sheet here. No one has signed up. Does anybody would like to speak? Nope. Nope. Yes, sir. Come on. Welcome.
Yes, my name is Patrick, AKA Skip Mill. And I'm here representing the veterans of Macon County. I have something I'd like to introduce to you. This is the National Veterans Wheelchair Games. This is happening in Orlando, Florida, the twenty-ninth of August till the fourth of August. What this consists of is Vietnam veterans. It's, first of all, it's brought by the paralyzed American veterans in cooperation. And these are games that are competitive games for people with disabilities, such as amputees, multiple sclerosis, and several other things. I'm going to be representing Macon County at these. And I thought it was important that you gentlemen knew about it and ladies. And we'll be competing against people of my own age and my own disabilities. Now, they compete in, so everything's a fair table. They compete bowling, skeet shooting, rifle shooting, pistol shooting, basketball, weightlifting, a variety of things that you can do with this. I thought that this would be, this is the first time this has happened in Macon County, to my knowledge. And I thought that it would bring it into your attention would also help veterans in the community and also the citizens of the community to know that we're involved in something like this. And I've lost my train of thought.
We're happy, happy you're going. What events are you gonna be competing in?
Big part.
What event or events are you gonna be competing in?
Oh, I will be in the rifle shoot, bowling, nine-ball tournament, and what they call motorized rally.
Okay.
With a motorized wheelchair, and you have to go so much of an obstacle course. And every stop, they ask you a trivia question and give you a card. So you can either win it by your best time, win it for trivia, or your best poker hand. I'm really excited about this, and I'm so looking forward to it. Now, the VFW Post seventy-three thirty-nine has given me the money for my motel room for this. And the Vietnam veterans has given me some spending money, or eating money more or less. I'm driving. My grandson's going with me as my caretaker. And I just thought you gentlemen would like to know.
I'm glad you shared that with us.
What we're, what we're trying to do in here and get these.
We're excited for you.
Get us a little more notoriety.
Right. I don't wanna tell the papers what to do, but that'd be a good little article. Well, thank you. We expect.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Got a couple of questions for you. Can I get you to spell your last name for us?
M.I.L.N.E.
M.I.L. Okay, we expect three, at least three gold medals.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping for.
Well, we're behind ya.
All right.
We're behind ya. Thank you for taking your time to come tell us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Appreciate it. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
That's in August, you said? August, yes. No, July twenty-ninth, August fourth.
Okay.
It's a seven-day event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome home, brother.
Amazing to see you here.
See you, brother.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak? Any, any additions or changes to the agenda?
Yes, I've got a couple.
Chester.
Just briefly, there had been a request to prepare a resolution and a proposed local bill in connection with spotlighting, and I had prepared that. I would ask that Mr. Mickey Carpenter is here to speak on behalf of that. If there is a way to get him closer to the top of the agenda, I would ask that that be moved up.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you have a problem moving that to eleven A minus? First one under new business? Is that good?
And I brought to you some documents. The Department of Transportation is seeking to acquire temporary construction easement and temporary drainage easement in the vicinity of the Robert C. Carpenter Building in connection with the improvements to the entrance to the Robert C. Carpenter Building. And the drainage easement is down closer to the, I guess that's, is it the Ag or the?
McGee Department.
Yeah. Fairgrounds.
I'm gonna move that to eleven H.
Paperwork is here, and you just, it can go anywhere.
Anything else? Lori? Derek? Ronnie? Derek?
Just one short item, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Jim Rutner will present, we're gonna be asking for a grant for a no wrong door. It's a system of navigation and telepsychiatry initiative that we started in the county, and we'll be asking for some grant money, and Mr. Rutner's gonna, would like to present that before the board.
Do you wanna just attach that to eleven A?
That'd be great.
Okay. Anything else? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Motion to approve in a second. Commissioner Shields, all in favor? Any reports or presentations? There's nothing left. Let's move on to all business. Second reading on revised animal control ordinance.
Gentlemen, at the last meeting, we had three members of the Board of Commissioners present, two absent. The three that were here all voted in favor of adopting that amendment. But the statute requires that all members of the Commissioners must vote for that in order for it to pass on the first presentation. So we're presenting it the second time for the full board's consideration with all five members present.
Unless there's any questions, I'll take a motion to approve the ordinance. Motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All business ten B, consideration of amendment to the Coliseum Community Association. Commissioner Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, gentlemen, Mr. Bill had approached me about the need for a second amendment to the Recreation Opportunities Agreement with the Coliseum Community Association. They had some money left over from the construction project that they had had approved by this board. They put that money to good use, is my understanding, that they would like to be able to use the balance of that, that money in order to do some repair and restoration work in the kitchen and bathroom and to underpin that building. Is that correct, Mr.?
That's right. They, gentlemen, these, these folks are doing an excellent job with the money from, from the Macon County citizens to restore this historic building. They've just done an outstanding job. It's been a great community project. They've watched every dollar. They do have a little money left, and they'd like to, as the attorney said, put it into the, upgrade the bathroom and the kitchen and do some underpinning. And they think they have enough with what they've raised to do those three things. So I would ask, I would make a motion to approve this request from the, from the folks at our, in Coliseum.
I would, would point out to the board that the amendment agreement contemplates the additional sum or approximate sum of ten thousand dollars. But just by, advised by the finance officer that the actual amount that's been saved is eleven thousand, six hundred, twenty-one dollars and fifty cents. Would the board want to approve that full balance and have me make that change to this agreement?
I will certainly change my motion, Mr. Chairman, to reflect that. It will take all that monies and more to do what they wanna do to finish up the building. If you have a chance, gentlemen, please go by and see what, what this community has done with this building. And I think you'll be much impressed. And, and if we can get with some of the other monies that they have, that they will need all the money to finish these three projects.
We, we were guesstimating that there was ten thousand dollars less. As it turns out, there's a little bit more.
All right, I think we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion, consideration of renewal of lease agreement for the gazebo property with the town of Franklin. Mr. Attorney.
Gentlemen, at the last meeting, you had brought to your attention the desire of the town to renew the gazebo property. I had sent to each of you some comments that I had regarding some changes I felt needed to be made to the document that was presented. I believe Mr. Bill raised the question of whether or not that property could be used for the consumption of alcohol. I will report to you that the revised lease proposal, which is contained in your agenda package, incorporates all of the changes that I recommended to the county. And it also provides that there shall be no consumption of alcoholic beverages on the lease premises. If that puts you in a situation where you're able to move forward with that lease, then you could certainly approve that decision. If you need to discuss it further, then that can certainly happen as well.
Discussion, motion?
That was my only concern, Mr. Chairman, was just that's county-owned property. And of course, we have ordinance of that alcohol or county-owned property. And at that time, the town was talking about having some events that included that. So that was the concern.
Okay. Any other concerns or questions?
Did, did you talk, was any discussions in regards to the county being able to use that property while it's being leased to the town?
I've had no discussions concerning that. That will have to be on a case-by-case basis. Obviously, if there's a problem with that, then the county certainly is in a position to terminate the lease.
That's a thirty-day, what was it?
It's a, it's a hundred and eighty.
All right. Will we get a motion or wanna talk about that a little more?
I make a motion that we both, as, as president, counsel gentlemen.
Would change. We have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner, are you comfortable with that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to new business, the spotlighting resolution. I think this, I was in by teleconference, and I heard that. And I've also received some emails and discussion from concerned citizens about this problem. And our local game ward, Mr. Mickey Carpenter, is here. Mickey, could you give us just a little brief history on that? You hear it a lot more firsthand than we do. I catch it secondhand, so.
Um, I'm Mickey Carpenter. I'm a local game warden here in Macon County. The way, currently, the way the law is written, if I approach, if I stop a vehicle, somebody that's spotlighting a field, and I suspect them for night deer hunting, if I stop them and approach them, and they say that they're coyote hunting, there's nothing I can do. It's the state I'm in right now, based on the law says that you can spotlight coyotes at night. The danger with that is whenever somebody's driving down the road with a spotlight, they don't know what's beyond their target from that point. For instance, Cherokee County, they had a house shot by somebody doing that. Said they were, they were hunting feral swine at night, shot, went to the, threw a house, actually struck about six inches above a little boy's head, and him laying in bed. So that's the dangers that we're looking at. What, what I would suggest would be to do something as far as helping with, with that. Right now, my hands are tied with it, just like some of the citizens had said. I heard what they, some of the things they had said. If I stop them, they just say they're coyote hunting. They go on their way. They go up to another part of the county where I'm not, because at that time, they know where I'm at. They go to the other part of the county, and they start shooting and putting citizens in danger at that time.
Okay, thank you, Mickey. Chester, any? So go ahead.
Yeah, we got some questions.
Do you have to have a landowner's permission to spot on their land?
Currently, you do not.
Now, Mickey, I was reading Cherokee's, Cherokee County's law. Now, the way I understand it, that's an ordinance?
Yeah, theirs is an ordinance, and there's a questionable enforceability. I've talked with the folks at the State Wildlife Resources Commission, and they are in accord with my opinion that this needs to be done by local bill. As a consequence, I've prepared a resolution with a proposed local bill attached to it. If the Commissioners are desirous of moving forward with this, they would need to adopt that resolution. And then we would need turn to, need to forward this on to one of our representatives.
I spoke with Representative Corbin about this, about the problem. He said he'd be happy to carry the weight, and that was our wish.
Mickey, you read, because you know Cherokee's.
Yes, sir.
So ours is a little different, not much, from that. But that, would that cover you?
Yes.
What Cherokee's has written?
Yes. Like you said, the difference with the ordinance, right now, we can't enforce it. We can't, we can't enforce local ordinances. We can only do state law. So that's where we're at right now. They're actually gonna have to go through and redo theirs as well.
The, the long and short of it is, is the Wildlife Resources Commission will only enforce state law. And some real question about whether the state law preempts the county's ability to enact an ordinance. And so the local bill is the way to proceed. Mickey Carpenter was kind enough to help me find a local bill that he felt would, would work. We looked, I believe it was at Rockingham County?
Yes, sir.
Rockingham County's local bill. And we, we essentially took it and changed some dates and, and the county name. So we know that's one that the legislature has been willing to pass.
And it basically says that you cannot spotlight from local right-ofways, roads or right-ofways. As it say, you can't do it from your own property.
From thirty minutes before.
Thirty minutes after sunset to thirty minutes before sunrise.
Mickey, I know our local coon hunters' club is probably one of the largest hunting organizations in this county. And my understanding is, have you heard it differently, that when we talked about this three months ago, I guess, that they had signed a letter of support from their club.
Yes.
Supporting this.
Absolutely. Their concern was that somebody going down the road, spotlighting a field, may shine their dog and shoot their hunting, hunting dog. That's what their concern was when I spoke with them. So they were in full support of it.
Why does the state not do a blanket?
Reason the state hadn't done that, they don't wanna hamper coyote hunting, like down, down east and hog hunting. It's big down there, so it's not as big up here. Legitimately, coyote hunters, I've, I've checked maybe two, where most time I'm stopping somebody, they're saying, "I'm coyote hunting," whereas legitimately, they're not deer hunting. Because in my line of work, I see a lot of people, a lot of coyotes on the road and things like that. If you put a spotlight on a coyote, it's gone. You're not gonna have opportunity to shoot it. Where a deer is gonna stand there for you to shoot it, and that's the reason that they do that. As far as the whole, state doing a whole blanket, that's about all I've got on it, to be honest with you.
Seems like it would be more consistent and easier to enforce as it have pockets of difference.
Yeah, and you, another thing, I kinda compare it to the shining law. For instance, Graham County, you can spotlight all night long in Graham County. It's based on the county that's supported that, just like road hunting. You would think they would have a blanket for the whole state, but they leave it up to the county. Where Macon County has a road hunting law, Swain County does not. Graham County does not. So you can go out and shoot animals from the middle of the roadway if you want to over there. Where in Macon County, you can't. So.
Mr. Carpenter, Jackson County specifies deer in their.
In the?
In their law, in their shining law. Their law says unlawful to shine intentionally upon a deer or in search of a deer between a half hour after sunset, a half hour before sunrise. But there again, if you do that, you can always say, "I was shining for whatever."
For coyotes.
Coyote.
And with the way that he has it written up currently, it's not gonna hamper somebody that's legitimately coyote hunting, because somebody legitimately coyote hunting is in the field. They're not in their vehicle, driving down the road, spotlighting.
On the, on the right-ofway.
Right.
That's the key to this thing.
Yep.
Where you, where you shining from.
If somebody's legitimately in the field shining a light, then they're gonna be, they're gonna be good to go. Whereas if they're driving down the field, shining from their vehicle, or driving, driving down the road, shining the field, they're wrong.
And your experience, that's where most of the spotlighters come from.
Yes, absolutely.
The people that've talked to me about it, they're concerned people are spotlighting their fields with no permission. They, they feel like it's, they're being infringed upon.
Yep.
There's nothing we can do for that with, at this moment, right?
Correct. There's no, there's nothing we can do at that time. But if they're shining their field with the current bill that's wrote, if they're driving down the road and they're shining that field, I can do something at that time. Because I can, I can, I'll be able to charge them at that time with the, the bill that he has proposed. Because I'll actually have it charged for, for spotlighting.
Spotlighting's still a problem, Mickey?
Yes, it is.
Make sure I understand. So if I'm in a public right-ofway, if I'm on my own property, if I'm in a public right-ofway, and I spotlight off of that public right-ofway across into my hayfield.
It's still exempt because it's your land.
But I'm, I'm in the public right-ofway.
But you're, actually in the bill that he has proposed, it says, a landowner, anybody that's not shining for, if you're shining for deer, yes, you would be, or you're shining for a wild animal. It says in the bill that it would be for, it was exempt for landowners, camping, and normal vehicular travel that's not intent, no intention of shining for.
Taking an animal.
Wild animals.
Okay, so if I'm, I guess, where I'm a little bit confused, is I'm sitting in a public right-ofway, and I shine my light out across the hayfield because I know I've got a coyote issue. And you pull up.
If I, if I pull up at that time, that'll be at my discretion. And most of the time, these places that I'm working in this situation, our officers, they know whose land is, who owns what land in that area. So at that time, I'll pull up and say, "How you doing, Carl?" And you'll say, "I'm out here looking for coyotes. I had a coyotes chasing my cows." Then we'll say, "All right, have a good day." That's where our discretion would come in at that time.
And once you have that ten point, probably gonna watch your ticket.
I have cows, so I have concerns about it.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's, that is a.
But landowner concern. Yeah, landowners are exempt if you're shining on your own land.
Yep. And just like, if you shot the coyote from your vehicle, that's against state law, just like this is. If you shot the vehicle, if, if yours in the road and you shot the coyote from your vehicle, you'd be in violation. But if you got out of the vehicle and off the road, you're not in violation.
So today, if I shot that coyote from my vehicle?
You'd be in violation a lot.
Because I'm in the vehicle?
Yep.
And in the right way.
Well, actually, Macon County law says in the right-ofway, right now, is deer is the only thing you can't shoot from the roadway in Macon County.
Deer.
Deer, specifically deer in Macon County. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mickey. Chester, any further comments? I'll admit, I'll say right up front, I'm personally in favor of this. I've, I've heard the complaints and the safety problems. I don't really see any harm with this at all, but if you gentlemen would like to smoke it over for another month, I understand, but I'm, I'm ready to move forward with it if anybody else says so. Is there a motion? No? Somebody wants to smoke it over?
Crickets. Right here, here's, I think I didn't find it either. Here it is.
You don't wanna take thirty days?
I understand the concern with it. In our community, we, we've experienced the spotlight and find part of the carcass next to me. Well, I don't want their part, but you find part of the carcass next to me, and you're gonna shot. So I'm making some assumptions. But I guess my hesitation, just a little bit, is involvement with cattle and understanding what we face there. That, that, that's my only concern, and that may not be your concern at all. But I just have a little reservation there, but whatever, gentlemen, I'll be with it.
How much, Paul? Anybody else?
The, the people that's talked to me, they were just felt like that people were spotlighting on their property. They just felt like that was infringing, that they should have to have permission if you're gonna spotlight their, from a roadway or somewhere like that. You're gonna spotlight on my property, you should have my permission. And I'm not sure this is addressed in here. Is that a?
It's not, it's not directly addressed in it, no. I think to the extent that they spotlight on your property, and then they kill an animal on your property and go on your property, then, then there's some civil responsibility of trespass in that situation. And if it's posted, I think there could be some criminal responsibility as well. But the shining a light on your property would not be considered trespass.
But odds are they're shining from the road. If you talk to those folks with Shields, I bet you'll find out. But those people that are shining are shining. If you talk to those folks, Commissioner Shills, I bet you'll find out that those people that are shining are shining through the road.
And I hope I have the mentality to understand that they're shining and, and not, and may not feel like they're looking for me or something.
Yeah.
I, I hope I can, uh, have the sound mind, uh, I won't shoot their light out.
Good, we'll get a motion to pass this resolution, we'll send it on to our state.
I'd be happy to make the motion, Mr. Chairman, because now is more important than ever. You hear Officer Carpenter talk about, because it's not like it used to be, the deer is in the neighborhoods now.
Yeah.
They're lower and lower and lower, everywhere you go, there's deer. I don't, it used to be, we'd have to go to Stanley, they had a warrior, no more. They're down in the neighborhoods, and that's reason this is so important. With that, if you said that Representative Corbin would carry the water on it, that's the main thing. What about Senator Davis?
I've not spoken with him.
But I think as a county, that is, this is, with the amount of deer that we have now and where they're at. I mean, I can recall them, and we have Clark's Chapel folks, you know, such a problem there. You've got somebody shining through the other houses everywhere now, so it's a safety issue, pure and simple. And, uh, and to give the authority to these folks that's out there overnight trying to catch these folks. So I'd be happy to make the motion, we pass the resolution.
Okay, got a motion on the floor in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Go catch somebody.
Thank you, Mickey.
You got a deer shining, they won't come. He says you up, you. They see that, they see that shining, don't come.
Good.
All right, eleven, uh, A plus. Public Health Fiscal Year two thousand eighteen nineteen billing and collection policies and fee schedules. Uh, Public Health Director, Mr. Jim Breton, welcome, Jim.
Thank you, and thank you for adding that grant in there for us tonight. Um, there are two documents, uh, they both were approved, um, at last month, last month's Board of Health meeting. Um, one is our billing and collections policy, and, uh, the other one is our fee schedule. Our billing and collections policy was already approved by the board last year. Um, there is only, uh, two changes that were requested by the state, uh, when they came and did their, um, audit of our billing guide. Uh, and they are on page eleven, um, and it's under our, uh, Animal Services and our Environmental Health Policies. We had to put an explanation here as how we determine, um, those fees, and we did that. Um, and I can read those if you want, uh, but I know you have copies. Um, so those are the only two changes in that document that we made. Um, if there are any questions about the billing guide, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Board of Health was unanimous.
Board of Health was unanimous at the last meeting, yes, sir.
Any questions? Hi.
The document verification, Mr. Breton, that's not changed, has it? That's, you still, that's the same document we've always required.
It's the same document that's required by the state, uh, in our.
That's the state.
Contract, yeah. Uh, the, uh, primary agreement addenda that we have with the state, that's actually signed by the, the Chair of the Board, uh, requires us to have a billing guide and a fee plan in place. And then it'd be approved annually.
We got a motion to approve?
Well, if you want to wait, you can do both at the same time.
Let's do it, let's do it separate, let's do this one first, since we got it here. We got a motion, Commissioner Shills?
Yes, sir.
You have a second? Second, Commissioner Higdon, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's the no wrong door initiative.
No, the fee plan, yeah, that's one part, this is the second part, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's why I was trying to separate them, I'm with you.
The, uh, the fee plan, uh, which gets attached to the billing guide once they're both approved. Um, there are only a couple of minor changes, and the easiest place to start is on the last page. If you want to look at the copies, the copies that you were sent, um, have the changes in red. Um, we have had a request, uh, from the community, uh, member to, uh, create an adoption fee specific to veterans. Um, so we proposed that to the Board of Health at their last meeting, and they approved that. Um, where we'd have a set animal adoption fee of thirty-five dollars for any veteran, for, uh, for a dog or cat. Uh, currently, a dog is sixty-five dollars, uh, a four, and a cat is, where'd it go?
Thirty-five.
Uh, no, it's sixty-five for a regular adoption, it's forty-five if they're already spayed or neutered. That's the one. The other one, uh, which is, there are three lab fees that we have. We are, uh, have requests, uh, from community, uh, members to do, uh, additional labs, uh, for our colposcopy that we do. Um, three of them, uh, one is a level two, one is a level three pathology, uh, screening. Uh, the, one is, the level two is thirty-five dollars, the level three is, or level, yeah, level three is forty-five dollars. And the other one is an IHC AB stain. If you ask me what that is, I won't be able to tell you. Um, I just know it's a stain that they do in the lab, um, and that is associated with our, uh, colposcopy, and that is a hundred and ten dollars for that fee. All of these fees were approved unanimously at the last Board of Health meeting. Uh, the rest of the fees in this document, which is about twelve or thirteen pages along here, um, were, uh, fees that have already been pre-approved by the Board of Health and both the Board of Commissioners as well.
All right, you got a motion to approve the fee schedule?
Based on Board of Health approval, I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Higdon, we have a second. Second by Commissioner Shills, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so now we're on, no wrong door.
No wrong door.
Sorry to get ahead of you.
Yeah, no problem. I'm sorry to bring this to you so quickly, but I, or late, but I was trying to get the Commissioner Beal beforehand, and we never been able to connect. Um, we had a community forum a few months, five months ago, um, called the, whoops, the No Wrong Door Forum. Uh, from that forum, we, uh, synthesized every, all the information we gathered from the community, uh, and came to the conclusion that, um, we probably need a systems navigator. Um, that's the No Wrong Door portion of this, and I'll go a little more into this in a minute, but this is an Evergreen grant. Um, the grant is for approximately sixty thousand dollars. Um, there are some county matching funds, but they're funds that are already appropriated into budget, uh, for the Health Department, um, that currently go towards the mental health services that we provide. Um, we're also doing this in partnership with Appalachian Community Services, who has a, an outposted, uh, licensed professional counselor at the Health Department who does, uh, behavioral health screenings and, uh, counseling for the clients that we see at the Health Department. Um, so they have some skin in the game as well. And we're also partnering with East Carolina University. Um, they are going to purchase, um, telepsychiatry equipment and give us three to four hours of psychiatrist's time a week, which is huge. Uh, and we'll be able to house that at the Health Department, expand capacity for telepsychiatry in the community. So, and, and preparing to write that grant for telepsychiatry, we had this other meeting, uh, and we've decided to try and pair the two of them together, uh, because there is that matching component. And because we have the matching component of telepsychiatry, we can use that to our advantage somewhat. Um, but we have between us, Appalachian Community Services, uh, and ECU, about a little over a hundred thousand dollars in the game. Uh, about a hundred and thirty-five, actually, and we're asking for sixty from Evergreen. Um, there's two components to the grant. The telepsychiatry component, um, would be that the individual that we hire through this grant, um, would basically coordinate the, the appointments for that. Telepsychiatry would set up the equipment, would introduce the patient, uh, to the cell psychiatry unit and the psychiatrist. And then they would leave the room, they'd have their visit and information to go back to the provider to, to manage their medications or whatever they're going to do. And then the person would take them away. So that's really in about a day and a half a week time. Um, the other piece of this that we're looking at is the No Wrong Door piece. From that meeting, one of the things that we, uh, were able to, uh, glean was that we really need not a care navigator, because you hear the term care navigator all the time, um, but a systems navigator. We need a person, um, or a contact place, uh, with an individual, um, who's well-versed in the mental health system in Macon County, who can help direct people to appropriate services. So that if you have a problem, and it's either a consumer or a family member of a consumer, and you need to access the mental health system, it's the kind of go-to person. Um, we're looking at it as similar to the Veteran Services Office, where we have an individual who, who coordinates and helps those people access the service. They don't get them to their appointments, but they help connect them with county transportation or whoever needs to get them there. They help connect them with whichever, uh, behavioral health or, or mental health agency that they need to be connected with. Um, but it's one individual well, well-versed in the system. Um, the rest of the personnel that work there or, or associated with that would be all volunteers with that office. Um, so what I'm asking for is, I know this is a lot of information to dump on you at one time, um, but permission to go ahead and apply for, and when, uh, if the funding comes available, accept the sixty thousand dollars from Evergreen to go forward with this project if we can do it.
Mr. Chairman, this, this is just the first step in this initiative. You know, we would love to be able to do the stepping up program. The fact is, a stepping up program, we are going to apply for that grant also. We just don't hardly qualify. You can't cross every T and dot every I in the stepping up program, simply because we don't have the treatment facility. This is, what the No Wrong Door is, is mostly one of the first proactive things you'll ever see. It's, it's trying to be proactive instead of reactive, uh, to help with a lot of things. Most of these families and, and the people that need the help, but also, uh, you know, we can, it does have a jail preventive part to it, if you can get to these folks in time. So, uh, with the treatment facilities to send them to, and, and hopefully, a lot of these folks can be, uh, you know, they can have community outpatient care, instead of ending up in the ER for days. And, uh, that's the situation we're in now and have been for a long time. So, uh, the Health Department's done an excellent job. What, who really done the work was those folks in that room that day. Commissioner Gillespie was there all day, and I think he can vouch for that. So those ideas, um, that's where these ideas came from, is the folks that was in the room. And, uh, so, but I do appreciate all the work, Jim, that the folks have done at the Health Department. And, but this is just the first step, and I think we'll be successful in, in, in getting the grants. And we are, uh, we're going to Raleigh next week to see if we can get more. So, uh, but we, so with that, if y'all want to keep it and read it for a little while, but we need to apply for the grant. The grant cycle starts.
It's now.
Is now, so.
The sooner we get it in, the better is what they told us.
And it took a while to, we had so much information that came out of the meeting, uh, it just took a, it took a long time to put it together. And, uh, so we had to have the facts right. And if you read this about York County and some of the statistics, I think you'll agree that we need to be proactive somewhere. And this is one of the steps, so. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if we need to, if y'all need to read it over or study it or.
Well, Ronnie, I, you know, I, I feel like I had the privilege of being in that room with those folks. Uh, the county manager was there and, and, uh, to say that it was I opened the experience is, is understating. Uh, you know, I, I left there with, with a even more of appreciation for a lot of folks, including our Health Director and his group. Um, you know, I think, I think this, this, while I haven't had time to review this, if it's what came out of that meeting, I think, I think I agree with you a hundred and ten percent, that's the first step. And if we don't get started, we'll never get there. So, so I, I think it's a real issue for, for Mike the Can, and, you know, it's, it's, it's going to continue to be. If we don't get started, we're never going to get anything done.
Let me ask a question, uh, that came out of that, that meeting that day. Um, is, is there a monetary qualification for students, or I'm going to say students, to receive this help?
No, none whatsoever.
So if a.
This is, this is.
Person in the school system, a child that needs some help, some assistance here, there, there's not Medicaid, Medicare, there's not a blockage there?
Well, they, you have to think about this component as kind of the, it's the connector person. Um, it's not what Appalachian charges or what Meridian charges or what a counselor, well, I don't think the counselors in the school, they may bill, I don't know. Uh, but, um, it's not a, it's not that component of where the people get billed for the service or where we'd have to come up with a rationale for billing the service. However, this person will know where the IPRS dollars are, what agencies have them, and who to make the referral to, to use that state money, hopefully to provide that service, and then it would be a service free of charge to that individual.
Okay, that's why.
That's the objective. This is a connection point. This is, you got to look at it just like Veteran Services, and we keep using that as the example. Um, they don't pay for services for people, but they connect them to the appropriate service in the community.
I, I think that's one of the things we've seen in education, uh, of students needing some assistance. Somewhere they don't qualify because of the family that makes too much money, is that right?
They, yeah, if they, if they're beyond Medicare, Medicaid, and beyond IPRS dollars, that could be an issue or a problem.
And, and I think we've seen that, uh, this problem, I mean, uh, just pertaining to one group. I mean, it's, uh, monetarily, it fluctuates all the way through. But there's, there's another group here that may not be qualifying, that, that needs help too.
And, and that is, that, that came out, I think, there were several things that came out in that community meeting that we had, the No Wrong Door meeting, um, around affordability of service, around connecting people with the service, around jail diversion, around opioid use and opioid programs, uh, treatment programs. Um, all of those things were identified. This is just kind of step one for us. Those are the things we can try and focus on and tackle as we go forward, I think. I think that was what Commissioner Beal was alluding to a few minutes ago.
Yeah, I mean, that, some of those things we're going to have to, when it comes to payment. Almost every provider now, the ones they see now, uh, over sixty percent don't pay now, so.
Is it due to their income level?
No, their, their destiny, you know, that, that has nothing really to do to it. They, but when you're talking about somewhat a student, there's other avenues to get reimbursement for a student that's even above Medicare and Medicaid. So, uh, but this is just, this is just the first step, which she was to try to get. Or somebody, I mean, you know how busy it is at my place with these folks, so this is the first step to get that. And, but if they need help, you know, to find some way to get them help, that's what this is all about.
And just to clarify, this is not creating a new county position per se. This is granting a grant-funded position that we would do, uh, the same way we do other grant-funded positions, which would be through, uh, the Association, North Carolina Association, a Public Health Alliance, I think it's NCA, PHA, however they say it, but, um, which is basically a staffing company. Uh, so these people would be run through that staffing company until we could make sure, uh, within a year or so, that, uh, we could sustain it and figure out how to sustain it, keep it in place with either additional grant funding down the road. Um, or we'd be back here having a conversation if it really works and, and we benefit the community.
And that's one reason the stepping up portion, Mr. Chairman, is going to be so important. It'll be ongoing, and, uh, so we can get a commitment out of that for several years and so. But it's just like Commissioner Gillespie said, unless we start, it can't, don't go nowhere, so. This is the first step, really, and, and so, but we are going to go after that monies too, so, and we'll be working on that.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, for attending, and want to y'all ready to make a motion?
Oh, I'll make the motion that we, uh, that we go ahead and, and give, uh, the Health Department full permission to seek these grants, uh, as, as we begin this, uh, this program for no other reason than to be proactive and not reactive in some of these situations for our families and people that need the help in our county.
Mr. Chairman, I enthusiastically second that. And then just add one quick comment. I think, um, it has pretty much gone unnoticed. Um, and I think it's good to recognize that, uh, ever, there's a lot of, a lot of causes out there that, that deserve attention, that, that, that maybe don't get the attention that they do. But, you know, it takes somebody to carry the flag, and I think it just needs to be publicly recognized. It's only Bill, uh, there's no telling how many hours he gives to this. Um, and, you know, I mentioned Mr. Ford, and I'll say again, thank you, Ronnie Bill.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir. He helped me with an issue last night. All right, we got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you again, Jim, for everything.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Jim. All right, item eleven B, South Macon Elementary. Just want to take each one of these.
Yeah, as you know, the county is embarking upon, uh, assisting the school board with a, an addition at South Macon Elementary School. The way we have historically done that, uh, we have, uh, held the title to those properties, allowed the school to lease those properties from us, use the property as security for loans. And in order to accomplish that, we do that. And in order to accomplish that, we do that through an interlocal agreement. And in this case, Memoranda of Lease Extension and Subordination Agreement. Those documents are part of your agenda package. If your desires are proceeding with the, uh, with the addition of the Southmaken Elementary School, we would need the board to approve each of those documents.
All right. We get them, you want to do them all at once, or?
Um, yeah, because, I mean, approving one will not get it done. We either approve them both or we don't approve any of them.
Okay. Mr. Bill, is, y'all's liaisons, y'all want to give us a motion to approve these and we'll-
Well, we've read through them, Ms. Shields and I have read through these. And this is basically the same thing, gentlemen, that we've done with every expansion. It's the same, basically the same documents that we've used for the past eight or 10 years to-
Or more.
Or more, when we start to do something with a school. So, uh, unless Mr. Shields has something that we didn't, that we overlooked.
Move forward.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And additionally, uh, Lori and I need for you to set a June 12, 2018 public hearing in connection with the proposed financing. So GS 168-20 financing, must be a public hearing on it. Lori and I can proceed with preparing the requisite notice for that.
We got a motion to approve the public hearing? We get a motion to approve the public hearing?
Yes, sir. Motion, motion to approve the public hearing on, that's our, that's our regular meeting, right?
That's our regular meeting.
Yes, it is.
Enjoy dinner. All right, we got a motion, I'm sorry, I missed the second. Second, all in favor?
No.
Aye.
Is that at six o'clock?
Yeah.
Yes, that'd be six o'clock.
All right, item C, consideration of interlocal agreement with Southwestern Community College regarding new public safety training center.
Hey, y'all-
Chester, you're busy tonight.
Yeah, as y'all recall, y'all have been in discussions with SEC about constructing a burn building. Uh, we have prepared an interlocal agreement to essentially accomplish, uh, what the, uh, parties have been discussing. Probably one of the big things in the, uh, interlocal agreement, uh, that's, uh, it's designed for the protection of the county is if and in the event the dollars are not forthcoming from the state, uh, to do this project, while we're deeding them the property to do this project, if they don't do the project, they're gonna have to do that property back to us.
My horse is proven red.
Got a motion to approve, you got a second?
This call has questions about-
Second, any questions and discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Gentlemen, you also note in the documents that were left for you, a general warranty deed. This is the actual deed by which that would be conveyed. I'm asking that you authorize your chairman and your clerk of board to execute that. I would respectfully ask that both the interlocal agreement and the deed be held until, um, uh, I advise the county manager to deliver it. Uh, there's one point that's got to be checked on, uh, agreements between Duke Energy and the county in connection with the Greenway. This property abuts the Greenway and we need to make sure that nothing in this arrangement would run afoul of those agreements with Duke Energy.
Okay. Any good questions? We're moving on, uh, we moved D up, so-
Do you need a motion on that?
We need an approval of, of that warranty deed subject to-
Motion to approve the warranty deed subject to the, as outlined with the attorney.
Second, my Commissioner Gillespie, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item E, discussion regarding the dog park. Can you bring the picture up?
Yes.
I think staff, or the TV's on?
No, they're not. I'll be getting it up, Mr. Chairman, if you want.
Okay, thank you, Derek.
There it is coming.
Okay, maybe it'll be clear.
Please operate.
Small picture, small mind.
Oh, okay.
It's like they were trying to zoom in, but it just makes it very blurry.
All right, I'll, I'll give a little background on this. Um, Mr. Miss Lippi, I won't, I'll point the finger completely with y'all, but I'll give y'all credit for bringing it to my attention because I've, I've heard it from, uh, more than, uh, more than you, uh, about, uh, our dog park near Wesley's Park. And I've toured it several times since we've had our discussion. And, uh, it's used very, very frequently and it's obvious, if we can get this picture up, just how much use it gets. I went out this afternoon right before I came here, uh, there were three dogs out there with families, uh, moving around. And, uh, there's a little bit of grass out there, there's a whole lot of sand out there, and there would be a whole lot of mud if it was raining. So I, I don't think it would take a whole lot of expense off of this board to maybe do some, uh, uh, opportunities for enhancements there. Uh, I've, I've spoken with actually several people out there of what we could do from, and then here's, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but here's the things that I'm hearing from them. There's no place for shade, so I think there's a temporary shelter that's been set up. I'm not sure who did that, ever on the side there in the picture. So they were asking for shade, potentially trees, maybe even a small structure. Uh, the biggest complaint that I've heard, uh, is, uh, water, uh, there's no water there. And the people there said they just walked over to the river and get it out and, and bring it back over. And it's, it'd be nice to have a water source there. And you can see by the lack of grass how much effort, uh, or how much use it gets. So, uh, I am in the landscape business, so I don't know if we can ever get grass to grow, except in the unused portions. But, uh, I, I think we can do better than this as a county with, with little, minimal cost. The Lippies mentioned to me about maybe setting up a committee, maybe to study this and maybe come back with some solutions. I'm comfortable with that, I just wanted to have this discussion on the board. And I will like to throw out there also, if there is any landscaping to be done, I will personally donate the trees to create some shade there, uh, out of, uh, stock from my company, so I'll, I'll donate those. So, uh, there's also, the Highlands Dog Park, uh, they, they don't have any grass, they use 100 percent mulch. And there is a massive pile of mulch that I'm standing on here when I take this picture and it's just sitting there. It looks like it's been there for a long time. So I don't know if, I don't, if mulch, evidently Highlands uses it, so it's not bad for dogs, but I don't know if mulch is the correct thing or not. But that's inexpensive, that's something we can literally get for free from some of the tree companies. If you'd like to help address this on, on law game, so-
Yeah, I'm capable of that, I know all of y'all want to afford to be here, thank you. And I did, I had an opportunity to talk to someone who, uh, the Gainesville Hard Area is over the whole, you know, park, active park situation. And they, they recommended exactly what you were saying, the very starved mulch, that's free. And, um, and then absolutely getting in shade and it's very generous on your part to provide some, uh, seed trees, that'd be wonderful. And he mentioned too, that like you did, the dirt is sand and mud and it's almost impossible in any, it's like a soccer field. It's, it's almost impossible to keep grass on it. And, um, he said the only way to do that in expensive scenarios, they actually dilute the soil, apparently. They put implements into it, I guess they go for vitamins and, uh, bring it out. But if we're ever to have any grass in there, I would think it would take, um, an irrigation system. Which again, that's not that expensive either, as long as they're running a water line over for water, spigot for water. So down along the line there, that would be something to be thinking about, uh, to maybe budget for in the year after, you know, something to improve. But you really do have a lot of people who will, will work with the realtors and they'll specifically ask them, if you ask the board of realtors, they will say, yes, we have people ask, please take us by your, uh, dog park, it's very important to us. Um, that's a social place for our community to meet and, um, it's, it's a good, it's a great place to meet and exchange ideas and, um, just be neighbors. So, um, the water is absolutely the number one issue and pass that shade and getting some mulch and then eventually hopefully getting some grass on there would be absolutely wonderful. I sincerely appreciate your consideration on this. And there really is a lot of other people in Macon County that do believe that. Geez, I would challenge Macon, I mean, uh, Franklin Press to, uh, put a poll in there and ask, you know, how important is that to you? And I know you all care about your constituents and how we, how you spend their money. And so you're gonna want to know that, but I really believe that, yeah, certainly anybody that owns a dog would like to see some improvements there.
Chester, you got a comment?
Mr. Chairman, yes, um, there may actually be some obligation to, to do some work on that area that is, uh, that's not covered with any kind of, uh, grass or otherwise. This, uh, property in here, some portion of it, uh, is in very close proximity, if not cover, by one of the conservation easements. And so as you're getting ready to, to do anything out there, that conservation easement needs to be consulted. It restricts us from the ability to do some things and allows us to do other things in that area. So, as you're getting ready to, to do something, uh, it'd be very wise to look at that conservation easement. Now, the, the flip side of that is, is we have found that there are things that are prohibited by that conservation easement. We contacted Clean Water Trust Fund, it oversees those easements and the enforcement of those. And if they, uh, think that what you're proposing is a good idea, they'll waive it and let you do it. But you gotta get their permission, basically.
I don't foresee this being a very expensive project. If I can get a head nod from y'all, I'll be happy to grab this by the horns and do a little research about water lines, how placed they are, see if we can get at least a spigot there, uh-
Isn't that-
Look into some, some of the issues here.
Isn't that water right here, Derek? I mean, it's right up above that?
They're right up above that at the, uh, at the water feature, yeah. But now, uh-
It's not a football field away from it, I think, if I'm not mistaken.
And, uh, yeah, they were definitely, it would take some, running some water line down through there. But like Chester said, without being in a conservation easement, there might be some restriction on what you could do.
It's a multi-page document, uh, and most of those pages are things you may not do within a conservation easement. But again, my experience has been, if you've got something that's constructed and is not, uh, contrary to, uh, clean water concerns, uh, they've been good to work with and they've waived some of those things and it's allowed.
So are these folks gonna come back with a design, Mr. Chairman?
I'll, I'll, what I'm gonna suggest is if y'all are in agreement and perhaps a little bit of interest in helping us prepare this, if y'all give me a head nod, I'll, I'll work with the Lippies and other interested parties and try and bring this to fruition, so.
They have that document he's talking about at the Frog's Corner, it's there and they have it and, uh, there are restrictions.
Yeah, there are probably about, there's probably 15 or 20 separate conservation easements along the, the Greenway. And I can get you the, the one in question, if you need that.
I'm pretty familiar with that document. It, most of it concerns plants, you know, that's the big thing in that conservation.
Plants and taking, any kind of grading and that sort of thing?
If it's a bar, don't cut it, that's all I can tell you. Don't bring the goats in and eat them like we've done ones before.
But I, but I will tell you, my experience has been that they're pretty easy to work with if they don't see what you're doing, uh, causing a problem to water quality.
What do you need, Mr. Chairman, you need a motion?
I just, no, I don't need, I just need a head nod from y'all and let me report back. I just, while y'all are in agreement, we'll go with, I'll work with the Lippies on it and, uh, we'll try and get it done.
What if we have our next board meeting, Frog's Board Meeting, it's next Tuesday, by the way, we've got a meeting, right?
We've got a meeting that's right there.
If I could see Jimmy and Gary just a minute after the meeting, it might be helpful.
We need to be in next, at 4:30 next Tuesday, at the Frog's Corner. And, and you're gonna be in town.
I'll be here anyway, yeah.
Right.
What was that time again?
4:30. Where you going, you're going to last, oh?
No, I hope I hear up to 30 minutes.
Okay. 4:30 now meets, no doubt there.
Okay.
And Mr. James is a good resource person there.
Okay. Feel comfortable with that?
Yes, absolutely, thank you very much.
Sounds good, yeah, thank y'all, thank y'all for coming to my show. Okay. All right, um, fireworks permit request. Present this old Edward Zan again.
Yes, this is very similar to one that the board approved, uh-
Last month?
Last month.
Yep.
I think this one's a week later.
We just need, uh, a action by the board directing, uh, that a permit be issued.
We get a motion? Got a motion? A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion regarding opioid litigation.
Gentlemen, y'all, um, probably of each, uh, heard a good bit of discussion through the North Carolina Association County Commissioners, commissioners about, uh, wholesale litigation being filed, uh, in connection with the manufacturers and distributors of opioids by counties and municipalities across the country. Indeed, um, I don't know the precise number, but I'm thinking it's in the vicinity of 40 out of the 100 counties have already commenced, uh, litigation, um, against opioid manufacturers and distributors here in North Carolina. Um, Macon County really hasn't had a great amount of public discussion about this particular issue. I think the, the attitude, I've had a little bit of discussion with county manager about the issue because the issue keeps coming up to, uh, to get educated about or to hear about opportunities and what have you. And so Derek and I have discussed it from time to time and I think our thought had been a little bit of sort of a wait and see sort of thing to, to see whether, uh, this is something that we needed to be a part of or not. I'm not sure that I have the information necessary to, to recommend one way or the other right now. However, I did receive communication from, um, an attorney, uh, in Winston-Salem that is working with one of the large consortium of attorneys, uh, basically indicating that Macon County in particular, uh, probably is disproportionately, uh, affected by, uh, this particular opioid problem, probably greater than most county, the average county anyway in North Carolina. I'm gonna go from recollection here, my recollection may be flawed, but I believe the indication was is that they, uh, figured we had, I believe it was roughly 34,000 residents. And based on the number of prescriptions written for opioids here in Macon County, uh, it, it, for opioids for 30 to 60 days, prescription for 30 to 60 days is my understanding, there's been enough prescriptions written that 91 percent of our, uh, residents in Macon County get a prescription in a one-year period. I know I didn't get one, uh, and, uh, so-
But, Mr. Chairman, we can speak to this, you know, we've been involved in, and this is my, just my thought. We was with, uh, a lot of counties, uh, Western Carolina from the district. What they're doing, they're, each county is individually, this is not a class action suit. Each county individually, and what, in the counties you speak of, you see very few rural counties involved, and here's why. Number one is, you see who they're suing, and I, like I told them with that, when you see Purdue Pharmacy as one of the ones being at the top of the list, then we might, I would consider supporting getting involved. At this point, uh, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that, that the county does not get involved in this suit. This suit's gonna be a long drawn out. Uh, these pharmaceutical companies have hired, literally hired everybody, every lawyer from the DEA, now works for pharmaceutical companies. They wrote the law. The ones that wrote the law now work for pharmaceutical companies. So this is gonna be a long drawn out, a fire, uh, the larger counties, that, that's the ones who's mostly involved. They have not only the resources, but, uh, I think if, if we, once we see that some of these large, Purdue Pharmacy by far is the largest manufacturer of opioids, there's nobody close. And, uh, so, as we, as we move forward, I would recommend- And so as we move forward, I would recommend what the attorney says, we, that there's a lot of things that we're gonna have to see happen before there's any, and what they're suing for is, you have to go through the expense, you think that whatever the expense is dollars to Macon County, that's what they're after, is to get reimbursement to the county. And but at this point, and that's basically what was said by the attorney from the association, basically you have to judge for yourself where you're gonna be involved in this kind of lawsuit.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not here to advocate one way or the other this evening, I'm here really more to communicate to you that there's an attorney that was interested in at least bringing, coming to you and making a presentation as to whether it would be advisable or not advisable from his standpoint for you to get involved in this litigation. Now, I understand he's coming with the idea of trying to get you to sign up for this litigation, because that's what he does.
I would save his time and trouble, Mr. Chairman. Right now, you see one of these big, large counties like Wade, Mecklenburg, they're all in this, Wade, Mecklenburg, Orange, Durham, Pitt, these large counties that's really putting funds behind it. When they start collecting, we can ride the coattails, it won't cost us anything, but until that time comes, I just don't see where Macon County's gonna leapfrog those counties.
And that's what I told him, is I told him, I said, if the board was inclined to hear your presentation, they would invite you. If the board felt like they might be wasting your time, they probably would not invite you.
Now, next Wednesday, next Wednesday, we'll be in Raleigh to hear the secretary and Attorney General Steens speak to this, and where the actual lawsuits are. That's another hard piece of information that's hard to come by. So I would, for right now, it's just my recommendation, Mr. Chairman, we do whatever, I'm sure that he's very knowledgeable and knows the situation, but I'd just like to take a wait and see how it takes these large counties.
I'm comfortable with that. Anybody else have a difference of opinion? Anybody?
I'll let him know. Thank you.
He's been at Robert C. Carpenter Building? Chester again?
Yes. Derek has been working with the right-of-way agent with the North Carolina Department of Transportation, and I know other people have been working with him as well. If you haven't seen, or taken a minute to look at what got accomplished when we got a red light put in down at the Ingalls, Robert C. Carpenter Building, what an incredible improvement down there, and thanks to some hard work from people in the county as well as the DOT. But they're wanting to make that better down there, but they're gonna try, I don't know if you've noticed, going into the Robert C. Carpenter Building, there's a big bump there as you go in, we're gonna try to get all of that working a little bit better down there. They're also, I understand, talking about having a, what is it, a deceleration lane
Yeah.
Coming in down there as well, and gonna do some work with drains. But basically, they're gonna need a temporary construction easement, temporary drainage easement from the county. If you look at the offer, they've offered $7,275 for those temporary easements. You'll see two drawings attached. The first drawing is a little, you'll see circled in yellow, that is the area right at the entrance of the Robert C. Carpenter Building. And that is the construction easement. They're just gonna need to be able to work in that area. I called the right-of-way agent yesterday, I said, does this mean we're gonna be blocked? He said, no, there will never be a time more than 15 minutes where there's total blockage of the entry or exit of that. They will manage it in such a way that we're not blocked for any more than 15 minutes at a time, so... The second page is a little further south down 441, and that is a drainage easement that's circled in yellow.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
What the figure really fixing to do is start putting a divider down the end of the road.
Kind of think about lowering that speed limit from that stoplight on up the hill. If you could get them to do that, there'd be some real value in that.
Can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda unless somebody has something they'd like Paul to discuss?
Just, I have one quick thing, just to ask the county manager if he would, I've got several calls, I don't know if you gentlemen know this or not, but the cell tower that we approved a long, long time ago, Windy Gap, that Verizon was gonna put the service all the way down through the Oliver Valley and down through Calais, well, they never done nothing. They put their equipment there, there's no meter there, they even took the light off the tower. I did call and contacted Verizon, they said, well, maybe next month or so, it's been how long?
It's been, it's been up, I'd say.
Two years, three years? Verizon's equipment's on the tower, but there's no meter there, there's no, they've never activated it since it went, so this is the second tower that we approved for them to do that. There's still nothing on the tower of Rainbow Springs. And the whole purpose was to help serve Maconians, and so whoever, we need to contact from Verizon to find out. If you remember, Verizon came, gave maybe a big presentation, and we approved that, and so now there's not even a meter there. They've even took the light off the top of the tower, so... Yeah, I mean, they, somebody needs to...
The ordinance addresses, if, some obligations, I believe, of tower owners if they're not in use.
Did we approve that, or did the Town of Franklin approve that in the ETJ?
Don't know, gonna have to go back and look. Seems to me that...
I think we had to approve that.
Yeah.
I think we did.
They did? But that's not... I'm pretty sure that the town, that's the town's tower.
Windy Gap?
Yeah.
Maybe that one, but the one in Rainbow Springs.
Yeah, the one in Rainbow Springs is definitely under oath.
But I think, I think we had, we had, we talked about this.
I know we approved, I know when we were talking about the attachments to the courthouse, that that tower was brought up.
But I don't think it matters who owns the tower. The fact is Verizon's got their stuff, aren't not servicing the folks. They're not in ETJ, the people that's supposed to be servicing. Somebody needs to call Verizon, say, what's the deal? If you can get a hold of somebody that can make a decision.
That's the kicker out there.
That's the whole, that's the end of the story.
I'll be glad to see what I can find out.
They don't have available broadband at the tower base, so they could put the radio up on.
No, I think they, check that out, I think that's fine. It's about the money, I guess, I don't know.
Report back to us, Derek. Report back to us.
Well, Joe Allen has some information on that.
All right, back to the consent agenda. Looking for a motion to approve unless somebody has something like removed.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have some appointments. I serve on the Highlands TDC Board. We've had a little bit of movement, I'm gonna read these off to you. Jerry Moore, who owns Kill Ones in Highlands, is gonna be the Small Accommodations Manager. He also has several small rentals. Jack Austin with Old Edwards Inn has recommended the place as a large accommodations representative. Bill Futral out of Scaly, that's gonna be an at-large member. Laura Huerta, who owns Lakeside Restaurant in Highlands, will be an at-large member. Tony Potts, Branch Manager of Integra in Highlands, will be the Chamber of Commerce's representative on the TDC. And Brian, Commissioner Brian Steeler will be the Town of Highlands representative, as well as me. So we just need a motion to approve these. And Mike, you're gonna have to help me out on the dates, and I have to get with Bob Kiltika to work these out. They had to do some switching, I know, because the state requires, I know, the state sets who sits on this board and what they represent, but to make it work, they had to do some flopping around, the chamber did, to get these names, so... So we get a motion to approve these, I recommend them all.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
The second one was Franklin and Hala Tourism and Development Commission. There's a letter from Linda Harbuck, and it states that Linda Sterrett would like to be reappointed, and Ron Haven does not want to serve another term. So I'll make...
I'll make motion, that's the approved, it's written.
For Linda Sterr, okay, so Linda Sterr will be reappointed for another term, and then the Franklin and Hala TDC is gonna be looking for someone to replace.
And we got invited at this time.
Haven, I think Haven's Large Accommodations Representative.
I think those agreements are up for renewal, are they not, 1st of July?
June, do you remember, Derek? We just talked about that, the agreements. I think we're gonna put them all up in June.
Franklin, I think we're gonna have for June, if I remember the argument.
Those are the chamber agreements.
I'll look at them, I'm sure.
All right, so we got the motion to approve Starbut, we're looking for a replacement for Ron Haven. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. My understanding is that there is a need for a closed session to discuss the potential acquisition of real property, correct, Mr. Attorney?
It is correct, and to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
I don't foresee us taking any action coming out, Mr. Manager.
It depends on, on how you, how you all want to proceed.
Sorry, media. We'll try and make it quick. I would also, before we go into...
I think unless you're going to direct the acquisition, a decision to acquire tonight, it'll probably be a discussion of negotiation and receiving advice from the attorney, which would not be action.
So let's do that, we'll just, we'll not take action tonight, that way we're not gonna move on.
You won't take action or not?
It just depends on how you all want to proceed after you have your information.
I'm gonna recommend we not, let's discuss it, and then we'll go and say... Before we take a motion to go into closed session and leave, there's a member of our audience tonight, that I understand that this is her last meeting with us, before she goes to have a kid, and then I think she's moving on to potentially greener pastures. You've been with us seven years now, I think? About as long as I've been a commissioner, maybe a little bit longer.
I predate you.
Yeah.
I should do, yep. I'll say on newspaper, we made 17.
I remember so well, when you came in here, one of my very first meetings in here, and you walked across, and we were asking you where you're from, Commissioner Bill, like, and he said, you're not from here, but you got here as quick as you could. Yeah, you agreed. We're gonna miss you. I personally, I think you've done an outstanding job, and no matter what social media or anything else says, I think you've been very impartial, and there's times that I would like you've been more partial on my side. So I think you've done great, and we're gonna miss you, Brittany, and we wish you the best of luck anywhere you go. And I will personally stand here and give you your own applause.